are key factors and we can start here at the local level. Start with Mayor Eric Garcetti and all of our 15 council persons as well as the LA County Board of Supervisors. We have to start at home and state and federal. Some of our biggest advocates at the federal level are Congresswomen Linda Sanchez and Congresswoman Maxine Waters and Lucille Royball Allard. They are the women at the forefront in California that are really advocating for more research, but also for lifestyle changes, as Dr. Petzinger mentions.
The cool thing about lifestyle is that it's free. I don't have to sign up for 24 Hour Fitness to do that. So, we're not talking about creating 24 Hour Fitnesses everywhere. What we're talking about is thinking about these concepts and leveraging what's in communities. So, the idea that wellness lifestyle is owned by people and it's owned by communities. It's not owned by an institution, it's not owned by an insurance company, it's not owned by a database, it's owned by individuals living in a community, which is awesome. As we get older, everyone's going to come down with something, right? If it's not one thing, it's the other. So, we don't live in bubbles. It's impossible not to come down with something. But what we can do, and giving lifestyles an example, is we can create the best version of ourselves, right? So, the idea that if we maintain this sort of practice of lifestyle, we can maybe not necessarily stop everything, but if we have it, we are able to endure it better, we are able to handle it better, and we're the best, better version of ourselves, if that makes sense.
Can you speak a little bit to the kind of promising things you're seeing around Alzheimer research and the way we're engaging people with Alzheimer's?
Well, I think still we have a lot of work to do compared to the Netherlands. I mean, they really plan for the future for their aging population.
Can you talk a little bit about what they're doing?
Well, there is a place called Dimanchia Village. And it was actually built for those that are suffering with dementia late stage. So, this is where people go when they are getting closer to hospice, so to speak. But it's a place where they can still feel like they are part of a community, meaning that they have a theater, they have a store, they have a library, they have places for engagement, for exercise. They want to provide an environment where they feel normal, even though they are declining.
What we would probably say about cure is this: number one, there probably isn't one single cure anyway, right? So, I think what we're recognizing with many of these diseases is that they're hard, they're complex, there's a lot of different mechanisms. And more importantly, certainly, for example, for Parkinson's, there's probably more than one way to get it. So, there probably is going to be, whatever that cure is, is really going to have probably multiple different aspects to it. Certainly, lifestyle will be one component. We know that. So, lifestyle with maybe some drug that would help modulate that.
Thank you for joining us. That's it for us here at LA Currents. I'm Mayma Rashid. Thank you for joining us.
In LA this week, a San Fernando Valley community puts together a holiday surprise for families in need.
I'm Anna Marcos here at the Museum of Illusions in Hollywood, where you can catch a few thrills and we are upside down!
How the City Library is inspiring Angelenos to explore their creative side. I'm Rasha Goel, and that story's up next.
Hey, everyone, I'm Yana Kay. On this Thanksgiving week, we look back at some of our favorite feature stories from LA this week. We start off with a Thanksgiving story, of course. The holiday spirit is in full swing as volunteers, including Councilmember John S. Lee and his family, helped make Thanksgiving baskets at the North Valley Family YMCA.
The YMCA, North Valley YMCA, gets together every year. This is our 13th year of doing this. And we put together baskets and Thanksgiving, you know, fruits and vegetables for different families. Take a look around, you'll see hundreds and hundreds of people here because our community always comes together anytime we ask.
Stuffing, mashed potatoes, cake batter, gravy, corn, green beans.
All, you know, local schools, we ask them to give us a list of all the different families, the needy families that would benefit from this program. They get a list, they tell us how many they need, and then we'll deliver them to the schools.
For our society nowadays, it's good to teach our children and the next generation how to lend a helping hand.
I want to be a kind person to everyone.
Families also had the option of choosing a grocery store gift card instead of a basket. As if Hollywood isn't already full of fun places, are you ready for another? Well, the Museum of Illusions will tantalize all your senses and leave you hanging upside down. Or will it? Anna Marcos takes a tour.
Here at the Museum of Illusions, you will get plenty of thrills, including this upside-down house where you can do all kinds of crazy antics! All the childhood fantasies or nightmares you've ever had are about to come true at Hollywood's Museum of Illusions.
Illusions are awesome.
Can you walk on the ceiling? You bet. And is this guy doing yoga on top of the fridge or holding up the fridge? Jurassic dinosaur bones for your dog? You got it. Or how about a little time on the red carpet hobnobbing with the stars?
He's amazing. It kind of just emits like 3D and just like your perspective of it, it's kind of cool. Just messing around, taking pictures.
It kind of expands our little imagination of like our children, you know, how we used to be like when we were five, six years old. It's like we're kind of playing it out, and so it's pretty cool.
Pretend like you just saw a shark right there. What would you do? Ready? One, two, three, go!
Oh, yeah. You even get concierge-level help posing for your pics if you want from the very imaginative staff.
Ah, I'm going to scream! One, two, three!
Cupcake joys, having to escape skyscrapers on fire. Fantasies colorful, pretty, bad, scary, and ugly are all at your disposal.
I'm like, yo, let's smile, let's have fun, be extra, because this is the place where you can do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to have fun, you know, get the best action that I could.
For some people, though, all of Hollywood, both inside and outside the museum, is one big fantasy funhouse.
Like if an artist were to like just print out his imagination, I feel like Hollywood is the definition. Like, I really love Hollywood. It's a piece of art.
Michelangelo, move over.
For more information, visit laillusions.com. As you've probably heard by now, Hollyhock House in Hollywood is now a UNESCO World Heritage Site. That's like the Oscars for cultural and historic value, and people are visiting in droves. Anna Marcos takes a tour and joins the curator in a game of I Spy.
First order of the day when you enter the Hollyhock House is put on your booties. And you can see why. There's actually lots of people in this house, sometimes as many as 40 visitors, and visitorship has actually doubled since it went on the UNESCO World Heritage List.
We know that we have history, we know we have great architecture, we know we have outstanding universal value. The world hasn't always thought so. And so, now, we don't have to justify it anymore. We've got it, and we're recognized for it. And UNESCO's done it.
Hollyhock House, the crown jewel of Barnstall Park, was built by famed architect Frank Lloyd Wright as a hilltop home for oil heiress Eileen Barnstall in 1921. It becomes the first LA landmark listed as a UNESCO World Heritage Site, joining an exclusive club that includes the Statue of Liberty and Yosemite National Park.
You had this iconic architect, Frank Lloyd Wright, move into collaboration with a single woman, Oil heiress, who is also an artist and a political radical. And the two of them began a collaboration to, in a sense, create an oasis in the middle of Los Angeles.
We call it Hollyhock House because Hollyhock House was Eileen Barnstall's favorite flower, and she asked Frank Lloyd Wright if he couldn't possibly use it in the design.
And this is a hollyhock?
And this is Frank Lloyd Wright's abstract version of the hollyhock.
The stone architecture, it looks kind of like Mayan or Aztec. It's very cool.
Did you know that that's actually an abstract design of the hollyhock flower?
I did not know that. That's awesome.
The fun game is how many hollyhocks can you find?
How many?
Well, a lot. But it's real easy to find the one in the carpet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they are everywhere you look.
You get to add to your list of I Spy hollyhocks.
Is this a hollyhock or?
It's an abstract, yes. There are elements of the hollyhock design in these windows as terms of architecture.
So, you have the real hollyhock and the abstract hollyhock.
Yep, the real flowers are planted everywhere, but in spite of the name, there's more to this house than just hollyhocks.
This is made of cast concrete blocks. It's an abstract design. Frank Lloyd Wright looked to nature for all his inspiration. You have water, you have fire, you have earth in the concrete, and you have light.
I really love architecture, so I wanted to kind of figure out like what was so special about it and like why there was like so much hype around it.
I'm a really big fan of Frank Lloyd Wright. I just really like his style because it's so simple and natural and really evokes the elements of the earth and nature.
I wanted you to take a look at the back of this chair.
It's a hollyhock.
It is.
And so, a Hollywood landmark has now been upgraded to one of the world's most important cultural and historic sites.
For more information and to schedule a tour, visit culturela.org and click on Hollyhock House UNESCO Designation. LA's Department of Cultural Affairs manages the site. A new upgrade is in store for LA's Emergency 911 Dispatch Center. Anna Marcos finds out how the business of saving lives is about to go more cutting-edge.
911 Emergency Operator 230.
LA's 911 Dispatch Center is now in the middle of training all its 911 operators so that they stay ahead of the curve. That's because the state of California is getting ready to change to its next-gen 911 system, and LA will be ready. In fact, part of its program will go onboard this month. As this on-the-job training shows, LA is indeed jumping the gun when it comes to the new cutting-edge technology.
Well, Next Gen 911 is all about being capable of getting videotape from the public. And if you're in a high-rise building, we can pinpoint what floor you're on or what room you're in. Right now, we're talking about California in November 2021. Eventually, the whole nation will be involved with this.
And sometime this month, the computerized part of the program will kick in at LA's two dispatch centers, one in downtown LA and one in the Valley.
We went from our flip phone, and now I think this is a smartphone. It's a smart computer.
All this while the center handles its usual workload of as many as 11,000 calls a day. 911 dispatchers not only field calls from the public, they mobilize the officers who respond.
They are lifesavers. I call it proactive dispatching.
I took a suicide call, and a gentleman wanted to take his life. And I said, was anybody with you? And he said, just me and my dog. And I asked him, well, who's going to take care of your dog when you leave? He's like, well, I didn't think about it. It was rewarding to me that I saved him and his dog.
Besides all the calls, many of the 911 dispatchers are also instructors. Miguel Estrada has a new trainee, Selena Guerrero.
What's the name of the church?
We do a lot of prompting, like if the questions, you know, like, okay, you know, ask her this, ask her that.
She has weapons.
Okay. Does she have any weapons?
I just had a shooting call, and yeah, the lady was frantic, so I wasn't able to get the information I needed from her right away. So, it was trying to calm her down to get the information.
So, was that a scary trial-by-fire kind of moment?
Yeah.
We put them through extensive training, and by extensive, I mean weeks and weeks and weeks of training.
And did you know, some of these dispatchers get to go to the Emmys and Oscars and other big LA events? They help with emergency calls there, well, virtually, not in person.
I'm at a separate location, so I'm not dressed in a gown.
911 is also trying online reporting for certain calls. For example, during 4th of July or New Year's Eve, you can get an app and report fireworks or loud parties online.
July the 4th, for an example, we take up to 16,000 emergency calls that day. When you're calling 911, you are tying up the system for real emergencies.
And that next real emergency could be your own. Whether dispatch operators can answer it within 15 seconds or half an hour could make all the difference.
And remember, if you have a non-life-threatening emergency, you can call the non-emergency line at 877-ASK-LAPD. That's 877-275-5273. It's a ride that's helping improve the quality of life for seniors, giving them an easier way to get around town. Rasha Goel has more.
I think City Ride is the best thing that could possibly happen for senior citizens.
At 91, Pat Philly goes to her part-time job and uses the City Ride service to get her to and from work. City Ride is a transportation assistance program with curb-to-curb service available for LA residents over the age of 65 and for disabled individuals.
You call in, you make a reservation, two days in advance for medical trips and one day in advance for all other types of trips. You call and you give them the address, and we will pick you up in front of the curb of your home.
With City Ride, seniors can schedule doctor's appointments, visit family and friends, plan for recreational and social activities, or even go to work.
It has helped me tremendously because I cannot ride on that freeway with the traffic, and I do need to work for a living. If you're able to use City Ride, use it because it is so helpful and it's comfortable.
Basically, you need to fill out a simple application. You send us a check for $21. If you're low income, it's $9 to register for the program, and we go ahead and put $84 back on that card. That subsidy amount was strictly for you to be able to use to take trips for three months.
The City Ride program also offers participants subsidies for taxi rides within the city of LA through the nine taxi cab companies the city operates. It's a service Pat has also used.
I have asthma, and my daughter has had to take me to the emergency hospital in the middle of the night. And they always keep you there four, five hours. So, I tell her to go home, and then I take a taxi home.
And we will give you $20 worth of value, so you can call a taxi all over the city of LA. We're also going to be introducing an app so that it also allows the flexibility of people to just go on their phones to be able to make the kinds of payments that they need.
And City Riders can also ride free on the dash bus. City Ride is wheelchair-accessible, and the maximum cost for a one-way trip is $4.
City Ride is available weekdays from 6:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and taxi cabs are available 24/7. For more information, you can log on to ladottransit.com or call 818-808-RIDE. They're creepy and they're crawly, and for many of us, they can be a little scary. But for some people, spiders are beautiful and gentle creatures that are more scared of us than we are of them. We head to the Spider Pavilion at the Natural History Museum.
To some, they are creepy, crawly things. To others, they are beauty in motion. The new Spider Pavilion that just opened at the Natural History Museum is crawling with eight-legged web weavers of all kinds, hundreds of them, and they are everywhere.
So, could we be walking and a spider falls on top of us, one of these big giant spiders?
You never want to say never, but generally speaking, when people are coming in, it doesn't happen. They're really safe and comfortable in their webs. They're very secure, they're not dropping or falling on people.
It was really fascinating, much bigger than I thought they would be. And they really kind of are everywhere. So, what is it people tell you the reason that they're scared of spiders?
Mostly, it's the legs.
Yes, all those mini, long, hairy legs, doing things. Val Hatcher, a guide at the Spider Pavilion and the museum, says these insects are things of beauty.
You're a spider lady?
I am a spider lady, yes.
Did you know that without these spiders, we humans might starve to death? According to our guide, the spiders eat all the bugs and insects that might otherwise gobble up our food.
The mist is here. We do want to make sure that our spiders have everything they need, both food and water.
To Hatcher, the eight-legged creatures are not just beautiful, they are artistic, they are clean, neat, and industrious. We saw many quite focused on their life's work, weaving all those webs. Oh, and they recycle, too, often eating their tattered webs in order to rebuild them.
One's eating another spider.
Oh, it's eating?
Yeah.
That one's eating.
And these spiders can be bloodthirsty cannibals. Up, down, and all around, the creatures lurk, waiting to see who falls in their web, but no need to fear.
If something big and scary walks by them, their number-one response is to run away and hide. So, they want to get as far away from us as possible. They are way more scared of us than we are of them.
It was fun, overwhelming. We were a little scared at first, but then we started to relax and started to see how cool they were.
Are you bigger fans now? No?
I'd still probably call my mom.
For more information, visit nhm.org and click on the Spider Pavilion. Dealing with work and family obligations are enough to stress anyone out, but there's a place in South LA that offers tranquility and peace of mind. Anita Bennett takes us inside. On this busy stretch of Adams Boulevard in South LA, there's something you'd never expect, a spiritual oasis called the Peace Awareness Labyrinth in Gardens, and it's helping Angelenos unwind.
I think everybody needs a place to get away, and sometimes you can't go, you know, far away. So, being right here in the middle of the city just makes it really convenient for everyone.
Sean Redding is a working actor, but the stresses of going on auditions, waiting for callbacks, and learning his lines can be overwhelming.
Well, a lot of times, I come to meditate. I'll come to the gardens here, and I'll just sit down and do some breath work, some meditation.
Paramjeet makes the trek from Northridge. She likes to attend the one-day retreats and healing events.
You know, for me, I'm a very sensitive person, so I can really tell and feel when my nervous system feels overstimulated. And there's really nothing like meditation to get that relaxed feeling.
Each year, about 5,000 people come here from across the LA area. And when they're not taking classes or attending events, they walk this labyrinth to meditate and reflect.
So, our thing is like we are providing what people need most, which is relaxation, de-stressing, and peace. And that's become, you know, absolutely vital in our society.
The facility opened to the public in 2004. And while some people come to meditate on the park benches, others reflect or listen to the relaxing sounds of a waterfall. Visitors say this tranquility is just what they need to recharge. Admission to Peace Awareness Labyrinth and Gardens is free, but you need a ticket to go inside. Head over to peace labyrinth.org for more information. It's a new lab that puts creativity within reach for all LA residents. Rasha Goel has more on how the Central Library is encouraging people to expand their imagination.
Imagine walking into a room with all the latest technological tools to create anything you want. Well, it's here at the Octavia Lab at the Central Library in downtown LA, a do-it-yourself center to dream, explore, and create, and it's open to the public.
We have this lab at the library because we are looking to show how people learn and how people become more technologically included inside our, you know, fast-changing world. We're trying to create, you know, have people have access to technology they would not normally have, either in schools, like little grade-school kids or as adults.
The lab is named in honor of Octavia Butler, an acclaimed pioneer of science fiction who broke ground as an award-winning author in a male-dominated genre. She regularly spent her time at the Central Library.
She was a well-beloved library patron. She was coming to the library pretty much every day, every week, every month, depending on where she was living, from the '70s into the '90s. She would pretty much have her favorite table in the history department. She would do research, she would write here. And part of her credo and her belief and her advice to people is to be persistent, to be persistent, to use the library, and to be creative. You know, all you need in order to create universes is the library.
There are so many different stations to choose from. Now, this is really a great opportunity to get your creative juices flowing. I have to say, one of my favorites is the 3D printing. You can create anything you want and print it. So, whether it's the library or, hey, an Eiffel Tower, you basically come in, create the design you want, and print it as a 3D model.
You can cut your own artwork, logo, or design, or use the computerized embroidery machine to stitch your own items. Or take photos and videos with a green screen, or even perhaps make a movie or podcast in the studio.
Okay, so who still owns some of those old VHS tapes, audio cassettes? You know you have them. Well, this might be your favorite station then. V, I understand that we can convert some of that stuff so we can preserve it?
This is going to be the equipment that brings in the generations. So, this is a DIY memory lab, and with it, you can convert reel-to-reel, 8mm, we can record VHS, we can record cassettes, you haven't seen one of those in a while. And from it, using a piece of hardware called right over here, and it converts an analog signal into a digital signal. So, you can convert these items into MOV or MP4, MP3 stuff your kids would understand or your little kids will understand. But pretty much, this is a way of preserving our heritage and having it continue on digitally.
I love that. So, and I can bring my personal tapes in and convert them here?
That's the plan, yes.
All right. I think I'm going to come back for this one, for sure.
The Octavia Lab is a digital media maker space that is free to use, and all you need is your library card. There might be some printing charges depending on the projects.
And if you're not feeling sure about what to actually do, well, you can always come to this machine, and there's a message of inspiration. In fact, you'll get a quote along with even some suggestions on what you can work on.
So, put on your creative hat and make your way down to the Octavia Lab, only at the Central Library in downtown Los Angeles.
For more info, log on to lapl.org/labs. Can the transformation of a mom-and-pop store help improve the health of an entire community near downtown LA? Well, Lupita's Corner Market owner says yes, as they reopen their doors with a much healthier menu.
A little more paint, shelving, and the stocking of merchandise, and Lupita's Market is almost ready for business, the business of making the community healthier.
Once a year, we do select one or two small markets to become a transformation. Right now, we're trying to catch up. We are bringing in some merchandise, we're bringing in fruits.
This was Lupita's Market just over six months ago, a dark, cramped mom-and-pop store on a street corner near downtown LA, where the snack du jour for kids coming in after school was often junk food. But Nusarango, her mother and family, who owned the store, wanted to change that and lead the way to healthier food choices.
A lot of our community, they find it really difficult to go to stores and travel miles away just to have either healthier food options. Having a community market that has everything that everybody needs is what we have become. It's a very passionate project for a lot of people, as it is to our family.
The Los Angeles Food Policy Council, which helps stores go healthier, stepped in, awarding Lupita's Market a awarding Lupita's Market a chance at a complete store rehab through its Healthy Neighborhood Network Market Program. Now, $100,000 in renovations later, the market is ready to be reborn.
The basic menu is going to be affordable for the community, and they're going to have salads, we're going to have soups.
The Healthy Neighborhood Market Network Program is to help small, big-business store owners in underserved communities, specifically small-market owners, to have healthy, fresh, affordable options. These are communities that are generally categorized as food deserts.
The project got a lot of help with pro bono work from the Gensler Architectural Firm and Build Group Construction.
We had this idea of a farmer's market, so where you would have baskets of fruits and vegetables, and that's what we designed into the furniture in the front.
There's going to be seating out front, behind the counter here. And the challenging part was the storefront walls. We had to actually tear it down.
For the kids who still expect to get their daily after-school snacks, Lupita's Market is offering curbside service during the renovation.
So the kids come even though you remind them?
Yeah, they, yeah. They told me, "Oh, my God, Lupita's no more. What happened?" And I said, "No, I'm here." So I want to say to everybody, "I'm here."
Oh, they are definitely here, better than ever. And bananas, oranges, tomatoes, and yogurt never looked so good on a shelf.
That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, November 27th, 2019. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. And we are going to begin with a presentation from Mr. Sadio, if you're ready.
Colleagues, good morning. I have a great surprise for you, a great presentation. I was so excited, I got here on time. It's okay to laugh. Not that you won't hear this again, but as you all know, I'm a proud Roosevelt High School alum. And I actually, believe it or not, played quarterback, first-string varsity quarterback in the Garfield-Roosevelt game. I was slow, and I was short. I was slow, and I was short, and I couldn't throw. So I was perfect for that team. You know, Boyle Heights was a... Boyle Heights in the East Side were really extraordinary communities in the post-war period. Both schools developed this incredible rivalry. It's now the top rivalry of the nation. And routinely, the stadium would overfill. And at one point, they moved it to the Coliseum. It was such a big event. And that community at the time was very post-war, so it was very diverse. And as Boyle Heights is often referred to as the Alice Island of the nation. And it remains that. But Boyle Heights has changed, as has East Los Angeles. And now, it's very predominantly hegemonically, some would say, Mexican and Mexican-American. It's very immigrant. Whereas, we grew up with the sounds of Motown and the Chicano music of the era, the Carlos Santana's and the El Chicano. There's a new sound on the East Side. It's reggaeton, it's banda, it's mariachi. It's a whole different vibe. But it's very... And all those things, the thing that it is ultimately is that it's American. And so, I want to thank someone personally here. Billy McMillan is a man who is an incredible storyteller. And the story's amazing. He's driving through Boyle Heights, and he hears about this great game that's going to be played in the evening. And is questioning, why would 20,000 people show up for a football game between two teams that aren't really that good? And was wondering, well, what's that story about? And in his inquisition, decides to go by and see what it is. I played in this game twice. And it's amazing, because you play against your best friends. Because you grow up on the East Side, and you know people either from the playground, or you know them through word of mouth, or you know them through summer school. And you grow up with all these young people. You play with them in Pop Warner, and then you play against them in this game. And so, it really is a great story. But the story in the movie is bigger than this. The story is really about the question of identity and place, race and poverty, America today and its future. It's a wonderful story. I encourage all of you to go see it, and it's why I wanted to bring Billy McMillan here today. You won't believe this, I want to acknowledge his team. Rafael Malmor, Zoe Morrison, Natalie Goldberg. Coach Sid, who's in the movie, got a flat. Who could believe that? So he's out in the rain with a flat, but he was meant to be here. Sam Hernandez is here, and he's a quarterback featured in the play, and he's doing well at Sac State. I'm going to bring them all up, so that you can meet them. And that's it. Are we ready for the clip? I want you to see the clip.
L.A. is turning into Mexico, and we have to decide whether that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Tired of the "I'm coming to your country..."
We need walls! And what I dare I say, we need walls!
These illegals just pouring over the border. What is going on?
In a few hours, two high school teams in East Los Angeles will go head-to-head in one of the country's biggest showdowns.
I want respect, and I hope all you guys want respect.
You ask them to run through a wall, they're gonna run through a wall. That's what East L.A. is about.
You're ready?
Yeah!
You're being nice to him. You're gonna buy him dinner tonight, or what?
People think I'm just another screw-up, another Mexican screw-up. I have dreams, like everybody else's.
I chose to be a father at a young age, and that's what I'm gonna be.
People in our class think, like, go back where you came from, and you don't belong here.
Having to go through struggles at such a young age, I think football has escaped.
You look like you wanted to quit. That's bull**** right there.
Be doing these fails, that's something you have to do.
I get scared, Dad, I'm not gonna go to school no more.
It ain't right, dawg!
What are these immigrants looking for when they see the Statue of Liberty? Freedom, opportunity.
These right here, this is family. We don't quit on family.
If you knew that this was gonna be your last plane, this is it, how would you play that?
I'd like to bring up Billy McMillan and thank him for looking at this community, respecting its integrity, and portraying it with the dignity and respect that it deserves. We are at a moment of change and crisis in our nation. What we saw up there are the future leaders of this city and this country. And I want to thank Billy for portraying them as they were, with all the integrity and honesty that this story deserves to be told in. Billy, please come forward.
Thank you guys so much. I just have a few quick comments. I spoke with Gil about a week ago, and he spent an hour on the phone with me. I'd like to thank, you know, the entire City Council for recognizing the film. Gil spent an hour on the phone with me, going through his life, and what this game meant to him, and what the community meant to him. And that was really profound. And what struck me was how much his story resonated in the kids that were there, that I focused on in the film, and how much hasn't changed, but how important this story is. Right now, our film, it's about community, it's about pride, it's about family, it's about tolerance. It's about so many things that are so important right now, and I can't thank this, you know, I can't thank this council enough for recognizing the film. Right now, we open in about 12 theaters in various parts of the state and surrounding states. And we really want this film to get out there in as big of a way as possible, because we really think that this is a profound part of the American story that needs to be told. So thank you very much.
I spoke for an hour, because Billy doesn't really say much. He just shows you what he thinks and his work. I want to invite up someone from the Garfield side, a friend of mine, a coach on the East Side, someone who grew up on the East Side. Went to Garfield, went to UCLA, has distinguished himself in the field of education. Eddie Elias is a longtime friend of mine, and I want to ask him to come up, talk about the film and the significance of it for the East Side. Ed?
Coach! This guy surprises me every time. I wasn't prepared for this, but the film was very inspirational. It's part of our life, part of our community. It's a story that needed to be told, not just about the classic, but of the things that happen in our community. There's a make-believe line that goes down Indiana that separates Boyle Heights from East L.A., but that's the only thing it does. It doesn't separate our communities, because we are both the same communities. We eat the same food, we speak the same languages, and we love the same things. We both love our high school, Roosevelt and Garfield, and I'm proud to be a Bulldog, as I am proud to be a UCLA Bruin. And this is my brother from UCLA, and he went to Roosevelt. So thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. And God bless all you guys that are here, Sammy and the Williams family. Really appreciate that you guys showed up, and wish you the best of luck.
Let me... Did you want to say something?
Sure.
Come on.
Yeah, I really just really appreciate Billy taking the time to really look into our story, because throughout Los Angeles, a lot of stories are not heard. But I'm glad we had the platform to really show our community, our heritage, our tradition, to people across the country. And I'm glad I was able to represent my family, my community, and my high school with the most respect. And I just really want to say thank you to everyone who contributed to the film, and everyone who supported us. Thank you.
This, obviously, was Roosevelt's quarterback. He has a very successful career. He'll be graduating from Sac State at the end of this year. Finally, let me close by saying, I want to thank Kelly Candell's with us, who's a storyteller and opinion-maker, documentarian. This film, I would encourage all of you to see this. It runs tomorrow, then it opens at a chain of theaters called Mayan Theaters. But it's really important for us to get this story out there, particularly at this time. So I want to encourage everybody to go out there. When I looked at it, the young men are going down this big driveway that we went through when I was a kid, and it brought the same butterflies back to my stomach when I saw it, and the same tears to my eyes at the end of it. I married somebody from Garfield, by the way, that's why I'm so bipartisan. And so, I just want to encourage all of you during the holidays, look for the film. It's citywide, it's running at Regal Theaters, it's over on the East Side. Make that journey over to this side of town. It really is about the future of this country, the real All-Americans. And it's what America's gonna look like with that. Let me take this resolution and give this to Billy, and congratulate him on an incredible storytelling experience, and just thank you again so much. Sweep left on two. Let's go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Madam Clerk, we now have a quorum. Can we go ahead and go through the agenda?
Yes, Madam President. I'll call the roll. Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weesar, Corretts, Kakkorian, Lee, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 12 members present in a quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Lee moves, and Mr. Rue seconds, next.
Madam President, item number... Oh, given the upcoming recess, would council like all items today to go forth with?
Yes, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Item number one is the item notice for a public hearing. The department recommends to receive and file this matter inasmuch as fees have been paid. And Madam President, this item must be held for cards.
We do have cards on this item.
Next is items two through 62. Those are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 48, 50, and 62 have been posted, submitted, and circulated for council's consideration. There is a request to hold item number 23 for an amendment. Items 51 and 52 are A and B reports. Item 51 should be held for a motion, and both reports can be adopted for item 52.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items, Mr. Kakkorian?
52 is not special.
Two... Madam President, number 52 and number 53, please.
52 and 53 for Mr. Kakkorian. Any other items, members? Just go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those items will pass. What's next?
What is next is... Does council want to go into the special meeting?
No, why don't we go ahead and wait for that? Mr. Ofero, I believe you have a recognition from your desk. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. We have a very, very special acknowledgement today of the artists who made the second annual Los Angeles... The City of Los Angeles Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration such a success. And we're gathered here today with most of the artists who made that happen. Last month, the city celebrated the Second Annual Indigenous Peoples' Day. With this annual celebration, we're continuing the movement to honor the people and cultures of the native communities, especially the Tongva, whose ancestral land, Los Angeles' civic center, is built on, including this very building. In 2017, we made history as the largest municipality in the United States to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. We removed Columbus Day from our city's administrative code and replaced it with a celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day as a city holiday. It is essential that we eliminate the false narrative that Christopher Columbus discovered America, nor much of anything else. Cities and states across the nation have begun to take notice in a much more accelerated and robust way, following the City of Los Angeles's lead. So I want to thank all of you in support of this, when we made history on August 30th of 2017. Today, I'd like to thank people whom my office collaborated with over the past several months to ensure our Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration was such a success. And we have a short video clip to show what we're talking about here. Please cue the video. Cue the... Indigenous Peoples' Day in Los Angeles was created on August 30th of 2017, after a nearly two-year process. And that process began with a motion that I introduced to take a look, to do an evaluation, a study, of what it would look like, or what it could look like, what the possibilities were of eliminating Columbus Day, and taking a look at a way to honor indigenous people.
Celebrating Columbus is really predicated on the mythology that he discovered a whole entire hemisphere that was already populated by millions of indigenous peoples. And so, we're here to set the record straight. Indigenous peoples have been here since the beginning of time, and we will continue to be here. We're members of beautiful, resilient tribal nations all throughout the hemisphere.
This is one indicative of what can happen, you know, as far as history being changed. You know, people don't want to stand for right, they don't want to stand for wrong, they don't want to be remembered for doing something negative, something wrong, you know, something that would set electricity to certain families and generations and cultures.
Native American Indigenous Day is just the beginning. It's gonna spread across the entire world, and it's gonna be like Mardi Gras in New Orleans. It's gonna be spread, the entire world's gonna take place, and it's everybody's gonna do the same thing we're doing here.
Thank you, L.A., this week for producing that video. We appreciate that very much. It's worth noting that the state of California declared Indigenous Peoples' Day. Came from the governor's office. There were over a dozen U.S. states that did not celebrate Columbus Day, but instead chose to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, with well over 200 U.S. cities, including Washington, D.C., our nation's capital. Also including, yes... This is not without irony, but also including Columbus, Ohio. Ladies and gentlemen, we're making progress. So you saw some of the amazing folks in that video, and... So you saw some of the amazing folks in that video, and some of them are here. I want to first acknowledge PJ Vegas. PJ is an incredible talent, and he helped pull all of the artists together to make this evening such a success, and I'm going to present certificates to everyone and just talk a little bit about them. PJ Vegas has an amazing career himself, that he has forged for himself as the prodigy of Pat Vegas of Redbone, who I'm going to introduce in just a moment. But you can check out PJ's incredible talent, and he has an incredibly bright future, the amazing and talented PJ Vegas. PJ? You got it. You bet. And you heard me mention Pat Vegas. He is an iconic figure in rock and roll history, founder of the band Redbone, and I think everyone remembers the song "Come and Get Your Love." Well, that's Pat. That's Pat Vegas, and he's here with us, father of PJ, a wonderful individual, beautiful human being, and I'm so delighted to call him a friend, Pat Vegas. Now, someone who killed it on Indigenous Peoples' Day night was the amazing Brooke Simpson. Now, you all know Brooke Simpson because she was on, thank you, The Voice, on The Voice, and I think came in to the third place. So Brooke is an amazing talent who has such a bright future, and she really is unrivaled in her talent, and you could see that evidenced the evening of Indigenous Peoples' Day. So it gives me great pleasure to bring you here, Brooke. Brooke Simpson, thank you so much. Also, is Motto here? No, okay, Motto isn't here yet. Pudizi. Pudizi is of Native American and African heritage, an incredible rap artist, and when he performed on Indigenous Peoples' Day, you could, people just stormed the stage because they were waiting for Pudizi and his incredible messages of pride, resilience, and he made that message across, an incredible talent, Mr. Pudizi. Also, B. Bennett. Now, B. Bennett is sort of the backbone of the entire operation, working with PJ Vegas and Redbone, and has been a constant presence to help make Indigenous Peoples' Celebration what it is. So, B. Bennett.
Yes. Woo! You got it. You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, so what I want to do now is, okay, we're also going to acknowledge the incredible talent that was on display that evening with fashion shows. We have The Hundreds. With us is Bobby Hundreds, an incredible talent whose fashions are now seen across the world, and he's with us today as well, and he brought the house down that evening as well with his incredible fashions on display. Bobby Hundreds. Now, many of you have probably heard about the Obsidian Collective. They were amazing. When PJ first brought them to my attention, I am so profoundly unhip, there are no words for it, but I learned through PJ how important the Obsidian Collective is, and they were an incredible talent on display that evening as well, and a lot of the artists who performed also served as models that evening. So Obsidian Collective. All right, so now what I want to do is acknowledge some of the folks who aren't able to be here today, but someone who is known across the world as an incredible talent and an environmentalist, Shetazkot, also known as X, performed with us that evening, as did Tongva native and incredible talent and leader in her own right, Jessa Calderon. We also had Taboo of the Black Eyed Peas, who made a special appearance, invited everyone on stage, and I was hopeful that the stage wouldn't collapse because so many people were up there having a great time. Antoine Edwards Jr., Doc, and Spencer Baptiste were there, a tribe called Red, and then Indigenous Enterprise, and another Tongva native, Kelly Caballero, performed. The RMCs were Ade Lamar of KJLH 102.3 for the second year in a row. We all hear her in the morning, and she's incredible. And then Eugene Brave Rock of Wonder Woman fame, an incredible actor who couldn't be with us today either, but that really sums up the moment. And as we are on the cusp of Thanksgiving tomorrow, we don't have to, we don't have to take Thanksgiving as the myth that's been perpetuated by mainstream over the decades and centuries, but we can reflect on what we all have to be thankful for. That's what I do. In fact, when I was growing up, we celebrated Thanksgiving at my grandfather's house, who was chief of the Wyandots, because we gave thanks to the Creator, we gave thanks to the bounty, the bountiful food that we had every year, but we did not buy into the myth that we've been taught, and you don't have to. So I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, no matter how you choose to celebrate it, and let's all just be aware of how much we have to be thankful for because of the first peoples who made everything possible for us. Thank you so much, and may God bless. This is Jessa's mom, and why don't you say a few words? Introduce yourself and say a few words. We have a Tongva native here, and Jessa's mom was here to perform with her daughter, and it was incredible. And then her grandson is here, too.
Yes. Me, Hannah Hinckam. Hello, relatives. Netwanya, Netina. My name is Tina, and this is Nishuk, my grandson, Honore Elsakush Calderon, and we were very, very happy to be part of this wonderful celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrow. Mr. Corretts, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Well, thank you, Madam President and colleagues. It's my great honor to recognize the Pet Care Foundation, a wonderful nonprofit organization that has changed the lives of many animals in Los Angeles. The Pet Care Foundation was founded in 2003 by the late Paula Kent-Meehan to create an animal shelter for Beverly Hills, and I had the pleasure to work with her on animal issues as a West Hollywood council member in the 1980s and 1990s. In 2004, Bill Crowe was hired as the director of the foundation, and for 15 years, they have worked tirelessly to reduce the euthanasia rate in city shelters. Paula Kent-Meehan was also the co-founder of the Redken Hair Products line and the owner of the Beverly Hills Courier, but her lifelong devotion to working with animals and her commitment to animal welfare has paid many dividends for the betterment of Los Angeles as a whole. And certainly, appointing Bill Crowe as the foundation's director, who joins us today, was a critical part of executing her vision. Bill's empathy and dedication to bettering the lives of animals has come to fruition through his entrepreneurial and marketing vision that has successfully raised the profile for each and every animal in our shelters to help them find their forever homes. In fact, since it began, Pet Care Foundation has found homes for more than 35,000 cats and dogs through adoption events, TV shows, and their grooming program. The Pet Care Foundation makes a life-saving difference for the fantastic dogs and cats in the LA city animal shelters every single day, especially because this unique city and foundation relationship has created a special synergy in more quickly and effectively making the animals more healthy and appealing for adoption. For example, the monthly Adopt a Pet program, called Adopt a Pet Today, shows that run on our own City Channel 35 every day at 12:30, provides free grooming services six days a week to transform our shelter guests into prince and princess charmings. It has a 90% adoption rate. Paired with monthly discounted adoption events, it helps more shelter guests move to loving homes on their own. Joining today is, us today is LA Animal Services Annette Ramirez, who has come to help recognize the Pet Care Foundation, and I've invited her to say a few words.
As the Director of Field Operations over life-saving for the Department of Animal Services, the Pet Care Foundation has made a huge impact on our animals for the community within Los Angeles. The Adopt a Pet Show really does highlight multiple animals at our facilities every month that have been overlooked by the public, to really give the public an opportunity to see how wonderful the animals are at our facilities, and without that promotion of the animals within our community, they wouldn't normally see these animals. In addition, the grooming that's done for our animals is something that really helps the animals feel better about themselves. You could see a transformation that happens from an animal coming into the shelter, feeling a little scared and uncertain of itself, and dirty and matted, to getting a really good grooming, and their personality just comes out. And not only does the grooming make them more adoptable, but their personality now shows, which makes them more adoptable. That always helps the public with wanting to come in and adopt those animals. And in addition to that, the discount events really encourage the public to come to us and add a new family member to their family when they're ready, because they can afford to add that member to their family. Not having the money doesn't mean that a person doesn't have the love to give to an animal that they've added to their family, so these discount events really do help the community, who otherwise wouldn't be able to adopt from us, be able to come and adopt from us and add to their families. And these have all been things that the Pet Care Foundation has really helped animal services with, and, you know, the outreach with the community to bring them into our shelter systems to increase our life-saving has been amazing, and I've really been honored to be able to work with the Pet Care Foundation for so many years, and I am proud and happy to continue to work with them.
Thank you, and now it's my pleasure to ask Bill Crowe, the director of the Pet Care Foundation, to come up and say a few words. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Corretts. He was a great friend to Paula, and she loved him dearly, and without his guidance, we wouldn't have grown to the state that we are to now, so thank you. Also, I wanted to say thank you to all of our volunteers, some of whom are here today, because we really couldn't do it without them, and they've been with us since the very beginning and have saved many, many lives with their help. Paula would be proud to be here today, I wish she was, but in her stead, we have our president, Marsha Hobbs, who has been a dear friend and a wonderful animal advocate all these years, and thank you so much, Councilman Corretts. Well, thank you, Bill, and now it's my honor to present this certificate to the Pet Care Foundation.
I just want to also thank Paul Corretts, who happens to be my council member, and hears from me a lot about different issues in Bel Air and West Los Angeles, and he himself is an adopter and needs to be recognized as being one of our best supporters. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, why don't we go ahead and go into our special meeting? Let's go ahead and re-says our regular meeting and go into our special meeting. Can you go ahead and call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscayino, Sedio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present in a quorum, Madam President. Item number 63 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us.
And, Madam President, for the record, item 63, the amendment, as well as the ordinance, has been posted, circulated, and has been distributed for council. For 63, there are cards on that.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the cards on that item. Okay, let's go ahead and call cards for item 63. Mr. Previn, are you here? Eric Previn? Followed by Armando Herman and Jennifer Cops. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn from CD2. This is in Weezer's district, and obviously, it's a 1,000-room hotel, but it's the signed district. So, signed districts are interesting. When you do it 24-hour notice, I hope the community's in on this, 5:00 AM to midnight, three, up to three, 1,200 footers, so that's, just for the record, 12 feet high, 100 feet across, three of them, and, you know, I mean, they're digital, so they're making, they've got all sorts of luminescence rules, but I just hope that the community that's going to be impacted, this is, you know, near LA Live, so maybe this is just bigger, bigger, more, more, better, better, great, great, but it's true, if it was in my neighborhood, I'd be freaking out that it was in 24-hour notice, and nobody has a sense to figure out what they're facing. Anyway, they signed it on the 26th, Bertoni, and I forget who, and Mr. Harris Dawson is shuffling it right along, and I hope you have 10 people. We'd like to see the 10 votes on it. Thanks.
Armando Herman, followed by Jennifer Cops and Tina Jewell.
Coming, Ms. Cops. For the record, 19 S T R O 03037, regarding the 1001 Olympic Boulevard, South Georgia Street. Yes, this is right there off of South Biggs Hill Street as well, west of Olympic Boulevard. It says that the recommendations for our fucking mayor's subject to approval, but the nigger's never at work. So, the current discretionary approval from the mayor's revisions of EIR are necessary because fucking changes to the circumstances exist on new projects. So I'm saying to this fucking CQ on your fucking EIR, you got the fucking mic too high, bitch. Physical impact statement is that the city attorney, fuck the city attorney, fuck the DEA, that's what little boozy would say. NWA, fuck the city attorney, neither the city administrator officer know the fucking shit.
Is Jennifer Cops here? No one's here, write that name. How about Jennifer Jewell? Tina Jewell, I'm sorry, Tina? Agora who? Sherman John? And Wayne Spindler?
These fucking James Woods Boulevard, putting more niggers in one day than Winston Ames Boulevard, it said Biggs Hill more niggers over there, the Winston Epic Boulevard. Quality Control Act, FBI niggers will present to the FBI, the CQ nigger project for 1,000-room hotel for niggas for the 14th District, for Jose Weeza to put in more niggas for prostitution after he go to federal prison in these niggas. This is, in this way, we put dirty, filthy...
Mr. Spindler, I think you're not talking about the signed district, you're talking about the hotel. Please get on top.
Stupid fucking nigger. I'm talking about the signed district for Jose Weeza to advertise that Nury Martinez is a badass.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. That concludes, cards on this item, let's go ahead and... That concludes cards on this item. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. Madam President, there's a request for this item to go forth with.
Without objection, that would be the order. Without objection, that would be the order. Let's go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and go back to our regular meeting.
Madam President, for the record, the amendment for item number 23 has been posted, circulated, and is before council.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and take up item 23 as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Let's go ahead and take up item 1A. Armando Herman?
Is this the one regarding 144 East 17th Street lien for $7,700?
Hold on, hold on, hold this time, hold this time. So you're speaking on 1A and general public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, but the lien, 1A, bitch. 144 East 17th Street lien for $7,732.92, you cunt. That's why the FBI's investigating Jose Weezer and that bribery shit, because he's making people in noncompliance and then using violations under the plum, P-L-U-M. You fucking inspectors are nothing but fucking cost-pursuant motherfuckers, and you gotta stop fucking making homeless people on your fucking setup corruption of liens. You know how bad that is when you come in here and you try to fight it, like a friend of mine who was in here by your fucking Department of Building and Safety for code violations because you want to kick him out of his house because he's disabled? You're fucking corrupted. You're fucking dishonest. You're fucking humiliating. You're a fucking bitch, you fat cunt from Sacatecas.
Next speaker is Mr. Previn. Followed by Ginger Chan. Is there someone here by that name? Mr. Previn, you're speaking on item 1A and general public comment.
Okay, thank you. I have some grievous concerns about the attendance of Mr. Wesson in that last vote. You can't do items forthwith without 12 votes.
So, Mr. Previn, would you go on to item 1? You can do general public comment later.
Which is the, thank you, sir. Don't shut my mic off, okay? That's totally inappropriate. This is a lien-
So, Mr. Previn, do you want to go straight to your general public comment, or do you want to talk on item 1?
$7,700 lien, sir, in CD14. CD14 is home of the Olympia Hotel, the item which we just talked about. CD14's a great CD. Weezer's not here. Wesson's not here. We have a problem on our hands, okay? Because you can't be pretending you have quorum. That said, this lien is a $7,700 lien. That's a very small and dainty lien for a big CD like 14. We remember when Mr. Habib got into a little hot water, when they were twisting the arms of folks who wanted vacations of properties, liens, similar kind of activity where council members can insert themselves and get some kind of a payoff. Totally inappropriate, sir. And, once again, I'm going to go to my general public comment now, but Herb Wesson has not been in this room, and I've been watching closely. So that's a big, big lie. Thank you. So, the items today, appreciate you got 62 items, one of which, which I just spoke on, was open for comment. You've got the MTA Biennial, you know, calling on for reports. Dog Leash Heaven for David Rue and others who are handing out dog leash parks, which is a great thing for the community, but they're doing it because it benefits them as well. Bloomingfield, the other day, said no to Outfront de Ca. Thank you, sir. But we do want mobile pit stops. Maybe we could tie that in. Carol, I saw that you got the several cultural historical designations on Agnes Street in our district. They're ordinary houses, but they're going to get basically the right to not pay taxes, which is totally fishy, frankly. Farr &amp; Pierce getting a re-up on their contract, good work. City Election Billboard, Channel 35, it draws me back to the special meeting thing. Three 1,200-square-foot billboards, you don't have a quorum. Michael Baez here, get 10 votes, get 10 votes. Bad. Very, very bad. Okay? And on top of that, I would just simply say thanks to Martinez for naming Ritchie Valens. Once again, an opportunity to have a big party at the public's expense during election time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mike Greenspan. Mike, are you here? Doesn't seem to be here. How about Reverend Mello Desire? Ma'am, are you here? Followed by Wayne Spindler. Ma'am, you're speaking on item 1A and general public comment.
All right, so, wanted to talk about H.R. 1856. Primarily, I submitted paperwork concerning how it came to Hollywood United Neighborhood Council.
So, can we start with item number 1A, which is the lien? If you don't want to talk about that, we can go straight to general public comment.
Let's do public comment, please, because I've got time to waste. I have one minute.
Give her one minute of general public comment. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right, so there is a permanent supportive housing project. That's our 110 freeway, but I don't see Harris Dawson here. These projects that are happening in the South L.A. on top of H.R. 1856, the Kingdom Warriors Foundation is not being brought upon these projects. We are a nonprofit organization, housing navigation. We have a homeless encampment on 115th and Vermont that still need housing. Thanksgiving is tomorrow. Why should the 42 people in this encampment still not be sheltered? Is anybody from Lhasa here? If you guys are supporting the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, then they need to actually house temporarily these people. You know, this is a waste of time. I come here and I'm explaining something very serious. You got Marquise is not even here. You got people not even paying attention. This is a waste of time. I'm going to go to the office and get your schedules, information, email you the proposals, and please, don't do projects without a community input.
You guys are ridiculous. Thank you. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler. Item 1A and general public comment.
Thank you, so, now you get to 114 CD8, CD number fucking 14. Let's see here, let's call the roll. Martinez, Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Sidio, Harris Dawson, Coretts, Krikorian, Lee, O'Farrell, Price, Rue. We never had 12 members, you cunt. So, how can we pass this? We can't go forthwith without 12 votes, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Mr. Spindler, would you stick to the lien, please?
I want 12 votes. Oh, by the way, turn my mic on, nigger. I can't hear my microphone on 1A, nigger. Okay, so, CD 14, it's $7,000 for prostitutes in pot. So, no to prostitutes in pot. Fuck this lien, waive it. So-
Now, you learn the power. Now, you know? The end of the month, it's a six-month anniversary of my fake fucking T R O filed by Mr. Bobble, and I have to file a claim. I haven't forgot, bitch. You'll be getting your paperwork on Thanksgiving, yes. Give him a hand. Yeah, that's right. You're going to get your ass sued, and you can't talk to Mr. Sidio out of it, you're going to go down. Now, we know that Herb Wesson has a bastard for a son that's a crack addict. His name is Douglas. But you know the good news? Even though he's homeless, even though he's a crack addict, Douglas is in a much better position than his brother, Justin, because at least Douglas Wesson, the bastard son of fucking Herb Wesson, is not married to that big, fat, fucking cunt of a cow, Alexis. Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes cards on item 1A. Let's go ahead and vote on that item, Madam Clerk. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Mr. Krikorian, did you want to go ahead and take up items 51 and 52?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, on item number 51, I'd like to move that the council adopt recommendation 51B, the Budget and Finance Report. And on item 52, I think we indicated that we can vote on both reports, the Budget and Finance Report, which incorporates the other committees' report, so that-
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on those two items. Let's go ahead and take up those two items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And item number 53, I was actually mistaken, Madam President. I got my, I got that one mixed up with the other two, so-
No problem. Let's go ahead and take up-
So I didn't need to call 53 special.
Let's go ahead and take up that item, item 53. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Let's move on to general public comment. Dani O'Sosa, are you here? You want to come on up? If I call your name, please, come on up. Jabari?
Oh, God.
Is Jabari Jemaine here? Brianna Gonzalez? Come on up. Go ahead, Mr. Sosa, you have one minute of general public comment.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good morning, City Council. I'd like to speak on the Phase 3, Round 1 Cannabis Retail Application Process. I'd like to ask that you guys do a couple of things. One is process all of the applications received in Round 1, and the second is to lower the sensitive use requirement between dispensaries only to 200 feet. And I think this would go a long way to show the social equity community that you guys really care about their plight and their success. So, once again, I just want to repeat those two asks, to please process all of the applications received in Round 1, and to also please lower the sensitive use distance requirement just between dispensaries to 200 feet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jabari? Jabari, you want to come on up? Followed by Brianna Gonzalez and Gloria Juarez.
My name is Jabari Jemani. I am a firefighter with the City of L.A. and a director of the Afiba Center in South Los Angeles, where for 20 years, we have sought to better the social circumstance of South L.A. residents through our cultural and our educational programming. As you all know, that we have recently received an unwarranted and retaliatory eviction notice from Marquise Harris Dawson, based on us speaking out against gentrifying elements and the gentrifying elements we found that are somewhat inherent in the Destination Crenshaw Program. In the paperwork we received, however, from the city attorney, what it does speak to is that there is, it needs to be a mandatory good faith effort at settlement before we reach court on this issue. We have reached out to Marquise Harris Dawson's office to see if we could achieve that mandatory settlement. Our efforts have been ignored. We look forward to making this happen to avoid further calamity.
Thank you, Jabari. Brianna? Followed by Gloria Juarez.
I'm here, once again, to explain, the government was designed before you guys was in this position, and it will be there when you guys are dismissed or resigned. I need my well-kept government that was designed for me personally. As census report for 2020, it result that my name is Brianna Gonzalez from Guatemala, which I've been knew, and my alias name is Mia Marie Austin Hayes-Elmore. That significance everything that started in 1990 on Allen Street, New Orleans, Louisiana. Now, can you please do me a favor and talk to me face-to-face about any new government issues or concerns that you guys want to delegate, because I am actually here in California, been here since a flight order April 5th. I had to fly commercial instead of my private plane, and I'm very upset that I'm homeless. I was staying at a shelter, but I got in a fistfight with one of you guys pretend little arrows of when I was gone. So, can we get anything for me as soon as possible? Thank you.
Next speaker, Gloria Juarez. Is there anyone here with that name, Gloria? Armando Fian? Armando? Someone with the last name McAllister? Okay, that concludes general public comment. Mr. Herman, you had your general public comment when you spoke on item 1A. Madam Clerk, that concludes general public comment. What's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Can we all rise for adjourning motions, please? Any adjourning motions to my left? Any adjourning motions to my right? See none? Have a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you very much. Our meeting is adjourned.